All right. Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, April 26. As has been the case for some months and likely some weeks forward, we've been meeting entirely on Zoom, as have our other boards and committees. You can pick up the Zoom links for those meetings at our website at pleasantville-ny.gov. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of our work session or a regular session at PCTV76.org. Our regular sessions are on the second and fourth Monday of each month, which means that our next regular meeting is on, get to the calendar, on Monday, May 10, with a work session at 7:00, regular meeting at 8:00. So add a few announcements to make, and then we have our police chief here to provide a quarterly update, which was one of the recommendations that came out of our police reform process. More on that in a minute, but let me try to jump through a couple of these announcements. First, obviously, is the world of COVID. I'm going to share my screen, reminding everybody that if you go to westchestergov.com, this is what you would see. Click to the top, you go to the dashboard. The dashboard will bring you to the Westchester County COVID dashboard in this left column. Once it loads, you can scroll down and see that the Village of Pleasantville currently has 18 active cases. The Village of Pleasantville, since yesterday, had two new active cases and cumulative, since they started counting, 694 cases. So it seems near certain, based on past experience, that we'll crest 700 sometime in the course of this week. But the happy news is that those numbers have been trending down, not only in Pleasantville, but elsewhere in the county. And it's great news. It certainly means people need to still be careful. If you go up here, you can click to a new dashboard, which is the vaccine dashboard, which tells you all of the various sites that are delivering vaccines, the total number of vaccines delivered. And then you can scroll down in this column and find the vaccine situation based on zip code. So if we scroll, where is 105? There we go. All right, so the 10570 zip code, which is bigger than just the village. Johnson &amp; Johnson, 324 doses, first dose of the two-part vaccine, 6175. Second dose, 4300. Forty-nine percent of the population, 18 and over, in the 10570 zip code, has received the vaccine. So not a bad number in comparison to some of the numbers you can see here in the left column and compare our experience to those elsewhere. A whole lot of people in Pleasantville and its environments have gotten vaccines, but we really, really encourage folks to do it. It is an extraordinarily good way to help protect you and everybody else. Northwell Health, which operates both Phelps Hospital and Northern Westchester Hospital, sent out an email today and reminded folks and wanted us to remind all of you that they have currently got quite a bit of availability. So if you go to this website, northwell.edu, type in "vaccine," you will get the Coronavirus Digital Resource Center, and appointments are available. Book now, filter by zip code, apply filter. Northern Westchester, Chappaqua Crossing, Northwella Chappaqua Crossing has both Moderna and Pfizer available now. So you can also go through the MI eligible site and go through the state. If you go direct to Northwell, it ends up in the state database. It doesn't matter which way you go or where you go, but the availability of vaccines is substantially better than it was even a couple of weeks ago. So let's get that Pleasantville number up well past 49. I really encourage everybody to do that. If you're interested in having a digital version that verifies that you have been through the vaccine process, you can download the New York State Excelsior Pass, which is available on Android or the iOS platforms, and that will allow you to download essentially vaccine verification into your smartphone and save it to the wallet, if you are so inclined. That's again available to you at the two-week point after your second vaccine, or I guess the two-week point after the Johnson &amp; Johnson. In work session, we had a good, long discussion with Mike Newman and Chris Mance from our Parks and Rec Department. We're rolling into the pool season and the daycap season. Pool information will be available soon, maybe as soon as next week for enrollment. We are around the pool season. There'll be some COVID restrictions, but we're hoping to make it as normal as we possibly can. If you or your offspring are interested in a lifeguard or counselor job, they should reach out to the folks at our Parks Department. And then two other items I wanted to just mention briefly that reflect what's going on at the state and federal level. One is, as you have doubtless read, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the COVID Relief Act issued by the federal government, will ultimately produce quite a bit of money for the Village of Pleasantville and for every community. We're roughly speaking anticipating about $400,000 in ARPA money this year, and then $400,000 next. It's divided across two years. We're waiting from the Department of Treasury to give us details about what the restrictions are for what it can be used for, because there will be some, but certainly very good news in a COVID-constrained year to help address budget issues. And then the last point I wanted to make, which I've mentioned in the past, is that, as you doubtless know, New York State has legalized marijuana with certain parameters. And one of the issues that we all confront in every community in New York State is whether we will wish to avail ourselves of the opt-out option, which is offered to us, to opt out of having a retail dispensary in our community and/or to opt out of an onsite consumption site. Neither of those two things, opt-in or opt-out, have anything to do with the legal status of folks using or possessing or with limits, as written in the law. Cultivating marijuana, the issue that we are given is simply to address the question of whether we want to opt out from sales or onsite consumption. So that's going to be a conversation with the community. And I know the folks at Pleasantville Strong have strong opinions about it and has given us some information. We'll make that available to everybody. But within the next few weeks, we'll be reaching out to the community to get a broader sense of where the community stands on those issues as we try to get our arms around what the issues are and what to do about them. So anybody else have announcements or comments before we let Chief Gretzner have the floor? All right. Chief Gretzner, Eric Gretzner, our police chief, will be coming to visit us on a quarterly basis to give us the Pleasantville Police Department. We welcome him here tonight for the first of those. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time. As the mayor mentioned, this was, these updates were born out of the police reform process, but I think it's providing a wonderful opportunity for a number of things. Obviously, for informational sharing out to the community and out to the board, but it also sort of focuses our efforts a little bit more. I'm looking forward to getting your feedback on the information that I provide tonight, if you feel that it's timely, if there are other things that you're interested in finding out about. And I'm looking forward to this being a healthy conversation and a process that moves forward, and hopefully this one's good and the next one's even better. So we can start screen sharing. Whoever's driving the...
You have it, Norine.
Us on this. Wonderful. This is my second iteration of the template for this. The first one was just a bunch of blobs on the screen, so I tried to make it a little...
Add to training. Do a PowerPoint.
I am, yes, I'm a big fan of PowerPoint these days. So starting off, obviously, one of the big, absolutely, we can, one of the big issues that came up from the police reform was the desire for the community to see our officers out on foot, engaging with the community. And I'm happy to report to the board tonight that we have reinstituted our walking post on Wheeler Avenue. So far, for the last three weeks or so, we've been out averaging about three days a week, and we do it from 11:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. So obviously, caseload or call volume is dependent on this, but we have definitely committed to putting officers on foot back on Wheeler Avenue and in the downtown business district at what is becoming, again, a very busy time in that area. And then as the weather improves, we'll expect to have our bicycle patrol back out on, you know, obviously, a little bit more. For those of you who I haven't had this conversation with in the past, bicycle patrol is sort of a, it's kind of a hybrid between that walking post and the vehicle. It provides a little bit more mobility. We're always challenged when we need to have two officers on the road ready to respond to a call at any time, to have a walking officer move too far away from his or her vehicle and not be able to respond quickly. The bicycle patrol, first and foremost, we usually, most of the time, it's a supplemental assignment for the day, so we would have an extra officer who is able to ride the bicycle. Or if possible, we do occasionally put officers on bikes and then just make sure that they're close enough that they can still come back to headquarters and get in the car or get back to their car, wherever that might be. Usually, it's headquarters because it saves the time of having to secure the bicycle to the car, but it definitely sort of increases the area that that officer can cover, which is good for the community and it's good for the officer, and it alleviates any potential for boredom and things like that. So we're excited to be bringing that back. You know, everything sort of dovetails, like any organization, all the pieces sort of come together and support each other. And we're going to talk a little bit more about our newest officers who are here, but the impact of having two new officers and two more people filling our patrol slots is going to, one of the ways we're going to see a very immediate impact of that and a very positive impact is, you know, more tours where we don't have just the bare minimum of officers, be more than two people on the road. And that gives us a lot of different opportunities, whether it's enforcement, whether it's community policing, whatever it is, gives us the opportunity to do a lot more for the community with the more people we have. So again, thank you to the board for supporting those two officers, who we'll talk more about in a few minutes. Norine, go next. So I know always a concern about our overtime numbers. So just a quick general breakdown of where our overtime hours have developed from. And you'll see that 630 hours are tour coverages, so that would be anything from holes in the monthly schedule as we issue it, to coverage for sick time or personal time or other accrued leave. But basically, we were below our minimum staffing requirements and needed to fill that in with overtime. So that was the lion's share of our overtime, as it usually tends to be. We did 64 hours of COVID, so when we had officers who needed to quarantine or to await test results, we had eight shifts that had to be covered for overtime there. We saw 46 and a half hours of crossing, school crossing coverage. So we'll use our parking enforcement, our community service working, community service worker personnel to cover those, but there are times when we still are required to cover a post, and we don't have any other options, and we have to go with a police officer to cover that. The good news is, within just the last few weeks, we did hire a crossing guard, a new crossing guard. So we do expect that those numbers are going to, for the next, for the remainder of the school year, we would expect that those numbers, barring any sort of unforeseen situation, we would expect that that's probably going to be lower for the remainder of the school year than it was for the last three months. 28 hours for arrest processing, case follow-up and court appearances. 24, 27 hours for the government, GTSC is the Governor's Traffic Safety Council. They, that's a state grant process that we participate in, so we send out and do different traffic enforcement with the money that's provided by them. On a side note, and this is still in the works, but I'm comfortable enough to talk about it in public, we had formerly and previously also participated in another grant, which was the Stop DWI Grant. If you remember at the budget portion of the conversation, we had talked about the fact that their funding, their funding criteria had seemed to be under a little bit of a... It was, there were some discrepancies. They were, it was evolving. Let's put it that way. There was some evolution in their, in how they determined whether or not they would fund our, the overtime that we submitted. But, and I will give full credit to Lieutenant Listwann for this, he really took the bull by the horns. He went out, he did a lot of legwork, made a lot of phone calls, talked to a lot of people, and we think we've kind of cleared up some of the discrepancies that were there. So we are looking forward to, not immediately, but hopefully at some point in the near future, resuming that Stop DWI enforcement and potentially, you know, that is a cost-free, a budget-neutral bit of enforcement that we can do around the village, which we find that very important. 19 hours for training, whether it was for specific training, which we'll talk more about the training that we did, or to the shift coverage for other people to go to training. And then just one event or one type of event with the football games that we had, we did pay ad hours of overtime for officers to be there. Trustee asked with, this is, these numbers go from January 1st through March 31st.
Thanks.
Absolutely. So next slide. In other news, I learned how to build a chart and put it into a PowerPoint this week, so this is the result of that work there. So again, you know, the vast majority of what, of what the overtime we're doing is just for shift coverage and to make sure that we have our minimum staffing on the roads. Again, talking to two more officers, we would, although it's not an hour-for-hour sort of exchange, we would expect that there would be, obviously, more people would create less shortages. Next, please, Norine. So we had just a quick breakdown. I'm not going to read through the numbers here. I'll touch on a little bit of things. Moving violations, parking summonses, winter is not the time when we normally, under normal years, would do as much traffic enforcement. Just the weather keeps people, usually when the weather gets better, people drive worse. So this would start to be, as the springtime comes up, we would probably see a little bit more enforcement. Couple things to consider, however, we are still operating with the consideration of COVID, and we really have tried to move toward a philosophy of engagement in addition to enforcement. So we are not, we are not, we've never had quotas. We are not counting officer activity by how many tickets they write, but I think if you drive around the village, you're still seeing that our officers are still engaged in traffic enforcement activity, but sometimes the realization is that more benefit can come from a warning or from a little bit of education rather than just making sure that we write a ticket. We had nine arrests. That number is low. One of the things that we've come to decide as a group, putting this information together and gathering all the information necessary for it is, this was, we were definitely, for a good part of this quarter, this community was still hunkered in, whether it be weather, whether it be COVID, but we are starting to have, we're starting to get indications that where people are coming out of their shells. People are going to start being back, obviously, as...
Ways, good and bad, I guess, right?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, businesses are starting to open up more, and so we're just seeing more interaction, and obviously, more interaction is a good thing for, like the mayor said, it's good for the community, but sometimes keeps us busier than we probably have been. So the nine arrests, too, were for impaired motorists. And again, we're starting to see more people on the street. We're expecting that those numbers are going to go up. Three drug offenses, two driving offenses, one property crime. It was not a significant crime, but I mention it here because it did represent an interaction and a partnership with the school district. They were the ones who called this, and this is something that happened up at the school, was not a student, somebody who was just on the property, did a little bit of damage, but we were able to respond quickly. And again, we're very, very lucky and fortunate to have the relationship that we have with the schools, and so anytime that we can have a positive outcome like this, we're very happy about it. Great, next. So we had no personnel complaints. I know we've definitely moved forward into a new era and a new relationship with personnel complaints, with the repeal of 50A, so I'm happy to report that the first quarter, we received no formal personnel complaints. And I would expect as we move forward, this slide is not going to change very often, because, as we talked about during the reform process, we, you know, we average one to two personnel complaints a year, and some years we go without any. So good news there. Next. However, if we're going to talk about the complaints, we should talk about the compliments as well, and we continue to receive good compliments. So just a few examples of that. Norine, if you could. So I had the opportunity to have a conversation with someone who I know in town, who has an adult son, a young man who's becoming an adult. He has some issues with dealing with stressors and things like that, and there have been occasions where we've had to respond to the house and just sort of provide some guidance and some assistance to the family to restore things. And POs Dave Cassal and Aaron Holly were both commended by name by this person as coming, being very empathetic, very calm, very reassuring to the family and to this young man to sort of restore the peace in the home. So I thought that was something that was worthwhile for mentioning. Next. And in addition, we've been chatting with, there's an elderly gentleman who lives alone in Foxwood. I don't like to characterize people this way, but his nephew was the one who called him a shut-in. He struggles to socialize and to be out in the community, and we have had the opportunity and the need to respond to his home, to assist him with, you know, slight medical or other needs that he has, and his nephew has reached out on multiple occasions in the last six months and just thanked us for the way that we've handled those situations. And again, you know, these are the two that I brought up, but this is, you know, as I'm sure everyone is aware, and people who follow this department know, these are not uncommon situations where we have people who are sending me emails or grabbing me on the street or talking to one of the lieutenants and just, or even just stopping at a headquarters and thanking people at the desk. I'm very proud of our officers and the way that they handle these, you know, noncriminal sort of concerns in the community. Next. And that's kind of restated what I just said, so we can keep moving on. So the numbers I just quoted before were for the patrol division. Obviously, our detective division, one detective sergeant, two detectives, we keep them very busy. We'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we've seen and sort of the things that they've been, they've been working on. We send all, we send a detective to every unattended death investigation, just to make sure that we investigate it thoroughly until such time as we are confident that there is nothing more to investigate. They were, the detectives, excuse me, alone with the patrol, was on scene for, we did have a fatal opiate overdose a few weeks ago, did a lot of investigation, a lot of interaction with the family, finding out the background, finding out the history, in a lot of ways, providing comfort to the family, because this particular case was, obviously, any overdose is devastating, but this particular case had some certain very sensitive undertones to it, and the detectives really handled that well and interacted with the family and improved their situation. And then one juvenile arrest, we obviously don't advertise juvenile arrests in that sense, but it is important to know that, you know, we have detectives and we have a staff that can sort of transfer back and forth between, you know, criminal investigations, overdose investigations, handling juveniles, talking to kids. So we can go to the next slide. They really do wear all sorts of different hats. In the community, our youth officers were at the middle school 16 times in the first quarter of this year, presenting on all manner of topics, and not only presenting knowledge and interacting with kids, but also just building relationships and discussing with them that, you know, you sort of have, I've had the privilege of being part of some of these presentations, and usually you start with a lesson plan, and within a short amount of time, you're onto something completely different. That's okay, because that's, the benefit of that is obviously far, it's difficult to measure. So we did do a presentation to a Boy Scout troop. We did it outside, we did it at the gazebo. Normally, that number would be much higher come this time of year, but again, we're still trying to navigate sort of the COVID aspects of interacting with groups. You know, we haven't done, we used to do preschool tours of the police department. We used to do all sorts of outreach in that way, and everything really has been kind of ground down to a halt, but we're looking forward to that, that work beginning up again. And, you know, our youth officers, our detectives regularly having interviews with parents, with youth, kids who sort of come across our radar, whether it's because there's an incident, whether it's because, you know, we're speaking to other members of the community who say, hey, this might be worth a conversation. So really trying to, you know, keep kids out of the system, keep kids from getting into trouble, sort of give them every opportunity to move forward in a positive way, and usually it's very, excuse me, it's very successful. Next, please. So again, for our staffing, 93 hours divided amongst the three detectives who are in that office, and that's anything from mostly investigations, some work on discovery, providing, whether it's phone recordings or digital evidence or anything else to the district attorney's office in a very narrow timeframe in order to maintain, you know, stay within the discovery requirements. Some training, some selective enforcement, and then, you know, we did have Sergeant, Detective Sergeant Garcia participate in one of the police reform, one of the police reform panels. So 93 hours, honestly, it's a very small number for the amount of investigations and things that they've had to do, and a lot of that speaks to the officers themselves. They're flexible with their schedules. They will work around if they have an interview coming in at 5:00. They don't show up at 7:00 in the morning and then make sure that they're going to get overtime out of it. They, you know, they'll change their schedule and do what's needed to be done. Very fiscally responsible in there, and I definitely appreciate that from them. Next, please. So training, we have, we've been involved in a great deal of training this quarter. We participated for the first time in the Unified Field Training, and what that does is that provides the opportunity for our officers to get up-to-date information in different areas, whether they be classroom issues, legal updates, physical skills and abilities, all sorts of things. So the most recent unified training that we participated in at the Westchester County Police Academy included juvenile justice, domestic violence and use of force. So our officers, you know, if we provided this training in-house, we would be getting one of our officers to become a subject matter expert in all of those topics. And through a partnership with the Westchester County Police and Westchester County Police Department is committed to partnering with the local agencies, they have subject matter experts, whether they're assistant district attorneys, whether they are staff who's assigned to the police academy to provide that training for our officers and officers from departments around the county. It's really, it's a very forward-thinking process that the county has undertaken, and we're happy to be part of it. In addition, we sent Officer Smith to standard field sobriety testing. What that is, is basically if you pull over someone on the side of the road, there are ways, you know, many times you can tell if someone has been drinking very easily. many times you can tell if someone has been drinking very easily. But for some people, it's, it's a little bit more difficult. There's a very scientific system of tests that we have as police officers at our disposal to test people for their impairment. And so we wanted to make sure that Officer Smith, who hadn't received that training already, was, was able to conduct those tests and testify to the validity of his observations. So he went to that training class. And we asked Officer Holly to become one of our field training officers. So we have a, we have quite a few, have six or seven field training officers already on staff. But we enjoy the ability to put officers with different field training officers. So they have the opportunity to hear from different officers, different experiences, different strengths. So we thought that Officer Holly would be a, a good fit to have as one of our, one of our group of trainers going forward. So she participated in that field training officer course and is now ready to train either a new recruit coming out of the academy or potentially a transfer who comes to this, to this agency. Next, please. So more training, we sent a number of our officers to be trained to prepare for our launch, or soon to be launch of the Hope Not Handcuffs Program, our opioid diversion program. So all of our sergeants, all of our administrators, all of our detectives and a couple of our police officers are all trained to understand the program, a little bit on a deeper level. For those of you who, who were not involved in this previously, this is a diversionary program whereby people suffering from the opioid use disorder can come to the police department. We put them in contact with a volunteer coordinator who sends an angel, they call them angels, to the police department. And in the vast majority of cases, almost every single time, that person is immediately transported to, to treatment. So we are partnering with a number of other agencies in the county to have this program launched. So we wanted to make sure that our officers had the opportunity to hear from the program themselves exactly what was entailed, what, what the requirements would be, what the program was, what the program was not. So we sent all of our supervisors and a few other people down to, to participate in that training. So we're looking forward to that launching in the very near future. And then we also sent a, a group of officers down to civil unrest training. So obviously, you know, the, the most, this is another topic where we feel a very strong requirement to be on the cutting edge. And this is, this is not just Pleasantville, this is throughout the county. So Westchester County, again, being a good partner, coordinated and set up some civil unrest training. So we have officers now who are prepared to, to be on, on the ground should there be civil unrest. Obviously, in the wake of the verdict that we were expecting in, from Minneapolis, there was a heightened sense of urgency to make sure that this, this was prepared to go. You know, the, the response has been, to that verdict has been very calm and very, we, we haven't needed to use this training, to use our officers for this. But there is now a, a, a large group of, of officers in municipalities throughout the county who are prepared to respond in the most appropriate and the least confrontational way possible. So we were, we were happy to, to participate and to send officers for that training. Next. Administratively, the administrative team, we did a couple of different trainings this, this quarter. Procedural justice for law enforcement executives, that was something that I, that I participated in. John Muller was one of the present, presenters for that, is the commissioner of the Yonkers Police Department, who many of you know. And again, for those of you who weren't here, procedural justice, I'm watering it way down, but it basically speaks to letting people know that when they deal with law enforcement, they're being heard, they're being respected, that the outcomes aren't necessarily how people judge their interactions with law enforcement. It really is the process. And so creating that culture, starting that training, those sort of executive level decisions. This was a webinar that, that I was, that I participated in to, to make sure that we were really sort of covering all our bases as we move forward with procedural justice training, which, which will be coming up shortly. And then the civil unrest for police administrators, that was a two-pronged course. We, the county trained a number of officers for how to handle the, the on the, on the ground response. But at the same time, they, they provided training for police administrators. And Lieutenant Wallman went to that, he participated in that training. I can tell you it's already paid dividends for us. So I know, I believe I saw everyone at the, at the rally down in the, in the plaza. If you noticed, I don't know if you paid attention or didn't, but there were no uniformed officers in the, in the area of that demonstration. And that was an intentional decision. That was a, that was something that Lieutenant Wallman brought back from this training. We did not feel that there was a need for a uniformed presence. We didn't think that a uniformed presence, being there or not, was going to make a difference. But we thought that the most, you know, our way forward is going to be that whenever possible, you know, we're going to approach with, you know, easier to go with golf shirts and khakis than having, you know, a line of, of uniformed officers there. So that was obviously a very, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to chime in there and say that I thought you guys did an outstanding job from the, the setup and, you know, sort of gently guiding cars out of the area to, and people may not realize who are watching this, that there were several hundred people who showed up to this event. And, and you had two congressmen and ultimately Chuck Schumer as well. So it, it was a serious matter, you know, to have your involvement there. And yet it felt very discreet and there was no trouble at all. So very, very well done.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. So.
Except for my son running over your foot, Chief, sorry about that.
He, he, he just, he wasn't looking, and I felt bad after that because I, I, I think if I didn't have the mask on, he would have seen that I was joking. But when I said, you ran over my foot, he looked at me like I was accusing him of actually having run over my foot. So.
He goes, he goes, Dad, are you gonna help to help me get out of jail?
I'm like. Well, I, I apologize if I scared him, but it was very nice to meet him and a sweet kid, so.
Great, that was a great day, thank you.
You can go next. So some upcoming training that we already have scheduled. In the next quarter, we'll be requalifying with our, we'll do twice a year, we do firearms. So we'll be doing that. We have two officers who are scheduled, hopefully scheduled. But we, we've registered for, you know, as the mayor said, marijuana has now been legalized. And so one of the major challenges that I and, and other chiefs in the area are concerned about is what happens when people who are consuming legal marijuana get behind the wheel? How do we enforce it? How do we know? How do we fairly keep people safe in this new, in this new paradigm? So we're going to have two officers who are going to participate in that training. We are constantly looking for opportunities for crisis intervention training for our officers. But it is difficult because the demand is so high. We have trained Sergeant Burwa, Sergeant Eric Burwa, to be our principal policing trainer. So he will be available to start training our officers in that, in that. Sorry, my dog just walked in. Distracted me. So they'll be able to train, train our officers. Moving forward, again, we've started some online principal policing training, but we really do believe we are committed to making sure that the in-person way is the way to go. And so we, we're lucky enough now that he's trained to be a trainer for our people. And then we're going to have, we have the opportunity to participate in some tactical combat medicine. Things like tourniquets and, and, you know, things that would be necessary in the case of a mass casualty incident. You know, get our officers, obviously. You know, we would never expect to have to use these things, but we'd like our officers to be trained to be able to help themselves, help other people. And so we're, we're excited about the, all of these different training opportunities coming up in the next few months. And now these, these are actually, I don't want to discuss them too much because they're actually for the next meeting. But things that have happened already in April, I'll just go over them quickly. Myself and Officer Casal, our special needs liaison officer, participated in a local law enforcement autism outreach and awareness program. Zoom meeting was very, very helpful, very encouraging. Two of our officers just today did some autism training for first responders. And I participated in a panel discussion a few weeks ago with a number of other chiefs, lieutenants and, and administrators from different, six different police departments around the county, everywhere from Bronxville to Peekskill to Mamaroneck, talking about, talking with service providers, social workers about the police reform process, what our experience was, what we wanted to accomplish, how the, the process went. And really speaking directly to how the changes in the system and, and the changes that we're facing would impact social workers. You know, these, these are partnerships that we, we take very seriously and we're going to continue to cultivate. So they were interested in finding out sort of how the process went along, what they could expect, what changes they might see. It was a tremendous few hours of a discussion that we, we spent. But again, I'll spend more time on that in our, in our second quarter update. So our policies and procedures. We have, we decided a few, a few months ago that it would be beneficial. We, we started participating in a platform whereby all of our policies and procedures are online. So we made sure that we gave everyone the opportunity to go back in, re-read, reevaluate, have any questions, come forward with them. Our entire policy and procedure manual, we've completed that training. We call it training, but it's really just refamiliarization with our, our existing policies. Obviously, we continue to review and, and edit and change policies as necessary. And then in this upcoming quarter, we're going to commit to coming to you in our next update with a suggestion as to our way forward. We do not believe that our current system is responsive. We don't believe that it is sustainable. It is very much, the information is out there and it's, it's, it's sort of the old way of doing things. And so there are a number of new ways, some of this, we, many of these things we talked about during the reform process. And so two of the options that are out there that are sort of the, the two major considerations are to attempt to become a New York State accredited agency. I will tell you that is, well, both of these solutions are labor-intensive. But they are, in this day and age, they are really required. You know, the backbone of our department is going to be our policies, how well we're trained on them, how well we follow them and, and how, how good they are. So we can go the accreditation route, which is a, a state procedure. Or potentially there is, there are other companies that are out there that assist you in updating your policies, keeping your policies updated. So we're gonna, we're gonna do some research and come back with a recommendation at our next, our next, our next review. Next. And so just some issues and concerns, some things that we've seen. We had a, a short breach and we expect to have again. We've talked about this, I believe, at other meetings in the past. We tend to have stolen vehicles in bunches. What it usually is, is many times there are people who come from out of state. Usually they're, I call them kids, they could be anywhere from 15, 16 years old, anywhere up to 20 or 21 years old. Most of the time it's for, for joyriding and things like that. But we'll end up having three or four vehicles potentially taken in one night. They will repeatedly work throughout Westchester in different communities. So, so we're, we're seeing that that activity is starting to, to ramp up again. So we would definitely tell anyone here in the village, please lock your doors. The, the vast majority of these cases, if not all of the cases that we've had, the, the, the keys were left in unlocked vehicles. So please lock your, your car doors, lock your vehicles, keep valuables away from out of sight and don't leave the keys within the vehicles. So we had a, a number of those vehicles taken and that is our policy that once they are recovered, whether it's in, in, could be, honestly, we had a few that were recovered in Connecticut. We'll go and process them and make sure that we can, we get any, any evidence that we can from inside that vehicle in case it turns out that we need it. In addition, many of you have probably heard on the news that there are waves of unemployment scams going on. People are having unemployment benefits filed for under their name. And so people don't find out about this until such time as they're contacted and said, you know, your, or your, their, their employers are contacted and, and inquired about if this person is actually unemployed. So we are doing our best to work with our law enforcement partners, the state and the federal level even, to respond to this as best as possible. And we are seeing an uptick in our youth activity. The weather's getting nicer, this is not uncommon. So we, we expect to see the kids back out again, like we talked about before. Usually that's very good, sometimes it's not. But we're, we're well-versed in understanding how, how our, our kids activate or, or act with each other in the community. Next, please. And then just a few other sort of items that we're, we're kind of working on and wrapping up. Obviously, as I talked about before, our new officers who were sworn in a few weeks ago are in the midst of their field training. They're doing extremely well, they're very well-liked, they're both very active, they're both, they're bringing, their experience that they're bringing has been very beneficial. We're very excited to have them on board. And again, very thankful to the board for, for the support and, and making that happen. Patrol vehicle, something that we talked about probably over a year ago. We've received one, but between shipping and, and backlogs and everything else, it's, it's been some time since our second vehicle has arrived. But we're expecting that vehicle to be here in the next few weeks. And then again, a project that we talked about, creating.
Sorry, Chief.
Yeah.
Which, which vehicle are you getting in, in a couple of weeks?
The second Explorer.
The hybrid Explorer, second one?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
And lastly, completing the upgrades to our training room and our locker room. Part of that is because we are excited about making use of some space that has been underutilized in the past. And also because this will, you know, we've talked many times about the locker room situation, the flooding areas down there. So we're gonna, we've, we believe we've remediated that. We're going to replace all the, all the things that need to be replaced. And so we're excited for the, the, the lower level of our police department to, to really get a, a, a new look and, and some good use. Next, that might be it.
I believe that's it, Chief.
That's it. So at this point, everything is trending in the right direction. We'd like to, we're excited about the, the increased activity level that we're going to see. We're incredibly excited about things getting back to normal. And just looking to remain responsive and responsible as we move forward.
Thank you for that, Chief, members. That was exactly what we hoped it would be and, and which we knew you would deliver. I think it's going to be a great thing, not only for the board, but for the community, just to have an opportunity to sort of reconnect with a lot of the ideas we talked about during the reform process, but also just to have a, a, a periodic check-in on what's going on in the community. And what you've told us is what we already knew, which is that Pleasantville is a very safe place and, and well-policed. But stuff happens. Lock your cars, don't leave the keys in them, that sort of stuff. But really happy to see the focus on training, which obviously is going to reap all kinds of benefits for all of us down the line, so. Hoping that with the two new people on the force, as you suggested, we'll see those overtime numbers shrink to next to nothing. Anybody have comments, questions?
I just wanted to commend the chief for that work that you did with social workers. One of my friends was the one who set up that program. And she was really impressed by just the professionalism of our department and you representing. So I think that's always great when I represent our village and just doing such a great job. So I commend you for that. Because they said that you were very open to answering any questions. And then I also discussed how you're very open when we did the. questions, and then I also discussed how you're very open when we did the, the forum in Spanish and English, which was great. A lot of people in the village appreciated that that was a really great event. So I thank you for being open to all these new suggestions and really being out there and representing us and putting us, making us look good. Appreciate it, Chief.
Great, thank you, thank you. My pleasure.
Thanks so much, Chief. I had two, two small questions, I think. One was about the autism training, and my question was whether that is something that's, that you had planned to do already, or that was in response to some of the discussions and recommendations from the police reform process? And then my second question was about just kind of budgeting for these crossing guard overtime hours. I wonder, I mean, is there something like a substitute crossing guard phone tree we might have, you know, for, you know, because I'm imagining that the, just the, I know it wasn't that many hours, but the cost of a police officer for, you know, for the work at the intersection of, by craft where there's five kids crossing, I mean, that's where we walk and there's not many kids up there. I'd imagine that, you know, some kind of, I don't know, I just, I wonder if we've done something like that before.
Yep, so we have, we usually, so we will hire any crossing guard who is willing to come onboard and go through the process. If we don't have a permanent spot for them, then we will 100% put them on a, on a fill-in list, and then we contact them as necessary, whatever we can do, whenever we can get them hours, then we will, but it's, it's a very, yeah, I mean, and some, you know, honestly, what happened in this is we lost a few of our crossing guards, some for short periods, some for longer periods. People had conflicts, this happens in this, you know, it's a very difficult position to really require, to really get people to commit to. It's an hour and a half in the morning, it's an hour and a half in the afternoon with absolutely nothing in between. So we do get whatever we can and get people to, we do get people to, hopefully, we, we offer them the fill-in position and tell them as soon as it becomes, as soon as a positive or a, a permanent position becomes available, we'll go off our fill-ins first and foremost. As far as the autism training, I did have the opportunity to have a couple side conversations with some members of the community who have concerns about, are dealing with especially people and young men and women of, with special needs. This was, this was, honestly, much of our training is, is determined on what is available. And this, this training became available, it's something that in this community, we are, you know, we weren't going to miss it because we know that it is, it is such a, we have such a large community of people who are involved with those concerns and have those concerns. So, you know, it, it was kind of a little bit of both. It was, it was fortuitous that it came across and that we had the opportunity to send someone, and at the same time, you know, this is, this is the kind of training that we're constantly on the lookout for, so.
Well, that's great. So you've reported back, have you reported back to the, to SEPTA or other parents who are involved with that advocacy work, or would you like us to do that on your behalf? Because I think they'll be thrilled to know that already there's been action on one of the items they wanted there to be action on.
Sure, yeah. I mean, if, if anyone has the opportunity to put it out, we're, we are looking, one of the things we're trying to do is, is create a relationship with SEPTA so that whether it's something like this where either myself or Officer Cassell comes to a meeting or liaisons with them, you know, any, any way that we can get the word out, absolutely. We, we definitely have our contacts there, but absolutely the more, the, the more the better.
Great, I'm happy to be a part of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, comments from the public? I'm not sure we have any member of the public to comment here based on the participant list. Chief, thank you so much for this, and thank you for stealing a little bit of your second quarter thunder by letting us begin into April because some good stuff going on there, so really, really appreciate it. We'll be working with you and the board and the community in the next month or so, putting together the committee of, of folks that was envisioned in the police reform goals to assist with communication in both directions. So anybody who is watching or watches this on tape will be looking for that, and if you're interested in participating in that, you should definitely let one of us know or reach out to Village Haller, Eric Marcy, or Noreen as we start to put that together, but more on that soon, so. Thank you, Chief, much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You and your dog. We didn't see the dog on screen, but I was hoping.
All right, next, I'll bring him on next time, I promise.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we go to the public hearing and the resolutions? All right, let her rip. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on introductory local law two of 2021, amending chapter 173, article seven, section 60 of the village code, parking restrictions on Cooley Street at the intersection of Bedford.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Welcome to the public hearing on this weighty subject. I will share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
So, so the issue here is, this is Cooley Street between Subway and the Art of Wine. We currently have a sign that says no parking here to corner, and yet there's no parking here either because there's a fire hydrant. And people commented to me that that seemed silly or confusing, and Jeff took a look at it and went back to the village code and determined that we need to amend chapter 173 in the manner that you see to establish no parking at a distance of 51 feet, is that, to the driveway from the intersection of Bedford Road and Cooley? So essentially, this whole zone, I got that right, Jeff? You're on there somewhere, or Eric?
Yes, you do, Peter. It goes from the intersection of Bedford and Cooley back to the entrance to the parking lot there.
Okay. So just a minor correction, it looks like that introductory local law should read a measured distance of 51 feet, right? All right, any comments, questions on this highly controversial matter? Is there a motion?
No, well, I noticed that this, that says Irvington Street earlier up on the document. I don't think it matters because it's not what we're voting on, but the-
Now, that is, that is, so this should also say Cooley, obviously, even though it does down here, correct?
We'll amend that accordingly.
My mistake.
Good point. All right, all right, thank you for that. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion. Motion approved. All right, to the resolutions, number 81, Paul. Hold on a minute, there we go.
All right. Result, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following management-based salaries for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Eric Grotzner, Police Chief, $188,281. Jeffrey Econom, Superintendent of Public Works, $172,687. Mary George, Treasurer, $167,612. Frederick Morisi, Administrator, $138,975. Robert Hughes, Building Inspector, $125,000. Noreen Regan, Administrative Aid, $117,594. Healy Shaw, Deputy Treasurer, $90,000. Stephanie Trim, Austin, Court Clerk, $88,285. Tony Arillick, Coordinator of Senior Citizen Services, $78,045.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? These reflect increases that we discussed in work session in executive session. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 82. Nicole, you get the big one.
Whereas the village administrator presented a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022, and whereas a public hearing was duly held on April 12th, 2021 before the Board of Trustees, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Pleasantville's 2021-2022 fiscal year budget is adopted as follows. General fund expenditures, $16,544,899. Special assessments, $7,738. Omitted taxes, $5,031. Village-wide tax levy, $11,885,700, I'm sorry, $460. General fund non-property tax revenues, $4,107,670. General fund appropriated fund balance, $539,000. Why am I seeing is terrible. Tax rate per thousand dollars assessed valuation is 97.6582. Tax rate percent increase of .89%, and a tax levy increase of 1.93%. And the, the budget in detail is attached to the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
So those who have watched us over the last several months have seen the evolution of this. A couple of things to be said. One is, I think certainly all of us on the board and all of us the administration, and I hope everyone in the community feels good that we are able to proceed into the next year coming out of this grim and difficult COVID year with a .89%, less than 1% tax increase. That's good for all in a year when I think lots of folks need as much relief as they can get. The second part I wanted to make is that although not reflected in the formal record, we could actually call this the honorary Mary Schwartz budget. Because in case you hadn't noticed, she has had the temerity to suggest that she's going to retire, and therefore we will not be having her when we adopt the next year budget. So I will have more to say on that at some point, but thank you, Mary, thank you for the able assistance over these many years. Thank you, Healy Shaw, delighted to have you on the finance team as Deputy Treasurer, and, and thanks to Eric and Noreen who have steered this ship as well, and thanks to all of our department. It's, the only one present right now is Jeff, but shout out to you, Jeff, because you're the guy here. Comments or questions on the budget? We've asked them all before, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. David, number 83, I'm having slow response here, it'll come.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the refuse rates for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 as follows. Reach condominium unit, $360.50. Defense of single-family residents, $480.73. Dual-family residents, $721.10. And a three-family residence, $1,081.64 with the schedule attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
That reflects no change in the rates from last year? All comments, questions?
That's, but just the, it is a slight, slight increase in the refuse rate. The one-family residents, for example, goes up $1.45. Slight increase.
Thank you for correcting me on that.
Sure.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. Michael, I don't know why you noticed, there we go.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following water rates for the fiscal year 2021-2022. For residents, $64.74 per 1,000 cubic feet. Non-residents in a district, $82.80 per 1,000 cubic feet. Non-residents, $97.33 per 1,000 cubic feet. Bulk sales at the residential rate plus the NYC raw water costs. The cottage school residential rate less the NYC raw water costs. The ready-to-serv quarterly charges, okay, here we go.
You can probably refer to these generally and say as further stated in the record to avoid the storm of numbers.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay. As further stated in the record, the ready-to-serv quarterly charges, the sprinkler system quarterly charges, and charges for types of unit dwellings.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Eric, no change in these, right?
No change. No change in the water rates, correct.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 85. Back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, in accordance to the village law, authorizes the village treasurer to levy unpaid water rents to the 2021-2022 tax rule.
Is there a second? Simply means that if, if you get too far behind in your water bill, it gets attached to the tax rule. Please keep up to date if you possibly can, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, Nicole, 86.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the tax warrant for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we should modify that title, or in the resolution title?
Yep.
That should, that should read 2021-2022. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, David.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the master fee schedule with revisions as of October 26, 2020 attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to comment on changes?
For the master fee schedule, there, there's no change in the master fee schedule. The last adjustments were made months ago to water connections.
So we're simply adopting it for the new year?
That's right.
Yep, but it's, but it's always best practice to do it because our water rates are in the master fee schedule.
Understood.
Just as a matter of practice, always have it in the same agenda when you adopt the budget.
Makes sense. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 88. Back to you, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the municipal separate storm sewer systems MS4 annual report for the reporting period ending March 9th, 2021, as prepared by the Superintendent of Public Works, with public access to the report available on the village, village website at pleasantville-ny.gov, and attachments.
Is there a second? So this is basically, and Jeff will correct me if I get it wrong, the state requirement that we be on the case to try to minimize inflow and infiltration into the storm water system to protect against other stuff ending up in the storm water system and cross pollination from sanitary sewers or the like. Have I got that right, Jeff?
That's part of it, and then there's also with regards to storm water management, any SWIPs that, from any developments, which we, we have limited SWIPs, but we have the two projects, so we have to report those in our annual catch base and clean in the likes, what we do. It's a rather lengthy document.
That it is. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 89. Back to you, Paul.
All right. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby points Lisa Dulce as a title intermediate accountant clerk, part-time available, job title, is that supposed to be Lisa? Is that right?
So her, her legal name is Licia.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Lisa Dulce has a title intermediate account clerk, part-time available, job title, 187 effective March 29, 2021, at the rate of $20 per hour. Set appointment is subject to a probatory, probationary period in a minimum of 12 weeks and can be extended to a maximum not to exceed 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to?
Sure. So we are, the the chief is conducting a a search for a part-time replacement for Lisa, who's been a longtime part-time employee in the police department. She's recently retired, but is coming back one day per week for five hours until we can bridge the gap with a new hire.
All right. Good news. I appreciate that. We've we've dragged her out of a very short retirement, at least one day a week. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Nicole, number 90. If it ever appears, there we go.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the deactivation of school crossing guard Daniel Shay with effective last date worked March 13, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Is deactivation something you can do to a person?
They 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 didn't submit a letter of resignation, so.
Oh, right, right. We talked about this last time.
And we are capped number wise with the county for number of school crossing guards. So we need to free up those spots to have some more subs.
Okay.
All right. 91, David, coming alive on the screen, we hope.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation in the amount of 2,650 for summer camp scholarships from Ali Lizowitz and Robin Gundy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So Ali and Robin were the people that put together, I think, a GoFundMe campaign. Have I got that right, David?
That's correct, yes.
So so this $2,650 reflects contributions from a bunch of folks who contributed to that. So thank you to Ali and to Robin for having spearheaded that effort and produced this great support for summer camp scholarships. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Motion approved. Michael, 92, inching forward. There we go.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 12, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Reminding folks the happy event was the hiring of Donnell Charles and Gustavo Beridis as two new police officers in the Village of Pleasantville. Comments or corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Back to you, Paul Alvarez.
Resolve, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2021. As listed below, the budget transfers general fund, $2 million going from the contingent to the village whole fuel, natural gas. Water fund, $2,083, going from contingent account to the water unallocated insurance, $170 going from contingent account to the water transmission, light path, internet and email for a total of $2,253. And the refuse fund, $163 going from contingent account to the refuse and allocated insurance account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions as we square up these accounts for the current fiscal year? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Nicole, 94.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated April 26, 2021 for fiscal year ending 2021, covering check numbers 100046 to 100150. In the general fund, 3,000 and 307,571.52 cents. In the water fund, 48,793.66 cents. In the refuse refuse fund, 29,063.52 cents for a total of
Is there a second?
Second.
As is always the case, you can click into the payment of claims and see every line item, comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. David, 95.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approve appointment of Raymond Nina to the title of court attendant, job code 0051, at the rate of $20 per hour effective April 27, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Michael, 96.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids to purchase lights and supplies for Memorial Plaza.
Is there a second?
Second.
So those who watched our work session last time or the time before that will know that Jeff Econom has worked out a design for the section of Memorial Plaza between the gazebo and Bedford Road that will reduce the width of the median and set us up to have angled parking on the public side with essentially no change on the on the commuter side. And Jeff has worked out a plan to provide new conduit, new lighting, and we seek to buy new light poles that would reflect the design that was envisioned for the other end of the plaza and the proposed civic space. That's what this is all about.
Sounds good.
Have I got that fairly reported?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Shout out to Jeff for his engineering CAD skills and all around good help. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 97. Is back to you, Paul. He's lost. He's lost. We've lost Paul.
Paul.
All right. To you, Nicole.
All right. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids to purchase a mean green 74-inch EVO commercial lawn mower. Oh, this is a good one for me to read.
I was gonna say, is there a second?
Second.
So there's been some discussion about replacing the mower and whether we can do it with an electric one or or need a gas one. Lots of opinions on all sides, but we're going to take a shot at the electric one.
Well, and a shout out to Sustainable Westchester because I reached out to them and they're the ones that suggested this particular brand, which has the right size that the rec department, that the perks needed.
I thought Jeff said he'd only take one if it was labeled, you know, with branded mean green.
Well, you can't argue against that either.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, back to Paul. We'll go backwards here. We lost you in an internet hiccup. You have 98.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorize for replacement of two existing rooftop HVAC systems and locking freezer condensing units at the Clinton Street Senior Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Self-explanatory, I think. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Fine.
Hi. David, back in order, 99 to you.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with OnSol to renew Code Red subscription June 20, June 1, 2021 to May 31, 2022 for a fee of $4,781.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just like insurance policy, we hope not to need this, but I think it's worth having Code Red being the mechanism by which we can reach out to folks in the community by text, by phone, by email. In the event of emergency, we encourage you to sign up at Pleasantville-NY.gov in the left-hand column. You can sign up on your own behalf, or if family members want to keep an eye on what's going on in Pleasantville in the potential emergency, they can sign up on behalf of their family member resident. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved, 100. Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with BFJ Planning to conduct an analysis of Manville Road, Bedford Road, Campus Drive properties for a fee of $7,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
BFJ is the is the planning firm we've used for a number of significant ventures, including our master plan update. And this will give us a sense of the lay of the land, so to speak, in the old village. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Back to you, Paul, 101.
Whereas our resolution 2021 considered the adoption of introductory local law two, 2021, which upon passage become local law three of 2021, parking on Cooley Street. Whereas introductory local law two of 2021 has been introduced to amend chapter 173, article seven, section 60 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning parking on Cooley Street. And whereas hearing concerning introductory law, local law two of 2021 was held in close February 26, 2021, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts local law three of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this local law three or two?
It is, it's introductory local law two, but introductory, it's local law three for the for the year.
Okay.
Yeah, we did tax cap and Irvington parking.
Uh huh. Okay. Comments, questions? This is the exciting matter between the Art of Wine and Subway. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. We have two items added to the agenda late breaking. One of them is 102, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Sarah and Colin Higgins, 107 Sarls Lane to hold a block party and thereby close Congress Street between Sarls Lane and Pleasant Avenue on Saturday, May 22, 2021, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Sign of optimism.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. And then the last of our agenda items, David, 103.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request to close the entire parking lot of Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Farmers Market and Pleasantville Garden Club's annual plant sale operations on Saturday, May 2021, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Further, resolve that the police department is hereby authorized to post no parking signs and tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the issue here is that once a year in the spring, when the garden club has the annual plant sale, which is a very popular event, it coincides with the farm market. There's some synergy between the two, but also some extra crowds. The point of this is to avoid overnight parking so that on the commuter side, the farm market and garden club will have control of that lot for their own customers. Is that right, Eric?
That's correct.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We've gotten our way through a long list of resolutions. Our next effort is, can I have a motion to leave the regular session going to an executive session on matters of personnel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Thank you all. If for those of you who stuck with us or those who watch later at PCTD76.org, as reported, our next work session, regular meeting, is the second Monday in May, which is Monday, May 10. Thank you all for the successful conclusion of the budget season. And thank you, Mary, for your good work on this and over. How many is it? 16 years?
Yeah, coming up on 17 if I were staying till August.
Yeah. Well, you could.
Thank you.
She shared with me the possibility that she might swim with hammerhead sharks, which is one of those things that we're happy to have our retirees do, but not our employees.
It's like a euphemism, working for other governments.
All right. Good night, all. Thank you, Board members. Sign in. Eric, did you send the?
I did. I sent it a couple of minutes ago.
Okay, great. So check your email for the login for the executive session. Thank you all and good night.